Welcome everyone to Isle Palm City Council. Today is Tuesday, September 24th at 6:00 PM. I'd like to notify that both the members of the press and the public were duly notified in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act. Thank you all for coming tonight. The first thing we're going to do, if you don't mind, please join me as I say a prayer, to be followed by our pledge of allegiance and then roll call. Oh Heavenly Father, I thank you for everything you have blessed us with. I feel fortunate to have been spared from the wrath of Hurricane Dorian, but feel for those who were affected or who lost loved ones. I ask that you continue to look over not only us, but all coastal and island communities. I ask that you look over our residents, our city family, our families, our visitors, and especially to those who may be suffering. Lord, please watch over those who protect our country and those public safety personnel who work 24/7, 365. I also ask that you look over our public works personnel who have put in long hours and hard work to make us look normal again. I thank you for our country's freedom of speech and our liberty. I ask for your guidance and wisdom tonight in making decisions that affect our residents and community for not only right now, but for future generations. It is in your holy name, I pray, amen. A pledge of allegiance to the flag, and to the states of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Acting City Clerk, Nicole Dunneen, roll call please.
Councilmember Smith.
Oh, here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Hello Nicole.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
Councilmember Rice.
Here.
Councilmember Bucking.
Here.
Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Rice.
Here.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda tonight is the appointment and administration of oath to new employees. This is always an exciting time when we have people joining our city family. We're going to do this one at a time, and if you have your better halves, your family, please all come forward when we do this. The first one up would be Ian Mobley. But my jacket so I look better.
I'd like to make a motion to accept.
Mr. Mayor.
We got to make a motion to accept the new employees.
I'd like to make a motion to accept all employees.
All in favor? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Unanimous. Repeat after me, please. I, Ian Mobley.
I, Ian Mobley.
Do solemnly swear that I am duly qualified.
Do solemnly swear that I am duly qualified.
According to the ordinance of the City of Isle Palms.
According to the ordinance of the City of Isle Palms.
To perform the duties to the position of which I have been selected.
To perform the duties of the position of which I have been selected.
And that I will, to the best of my abilities.
And that I will, to the best of my abilities.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
So help me God.
So help me God.
A little background. Ian is from Jacksonville, Florida, and before coming to Isle Palms Police Department, he worked for the Dunbar Brink's Security. Ian graduated from Edward Waters College with a degree in criminal justice. And this is a good interesting fact. When I was at Isle Palms, Ian spends his time as a DJ. But this is getting better now. His date's name is K Dot. I should have said that in the beginning. I hear he spins some really great tunes.
Awesome.
Welcome aboard, thank you.
I, Bobby Hunter.
I, Bobby Hunter.
Do solemnly swear that I am duly qualified.
Do solemnly swear that I am duly qualified.
According to the ordinance of the City of Isle Palms.
According to the ordinance of the City of Isle Palms.
To perform the duties of the position to which I have been selected.
Perform the duties for the position for which I've been selected.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Now the fun part, some background. Bob was born and raised in Ohio, where he ran track and cross-country in college, as well as being a high school state champ in cross-country. He has dispatched for the Ohio State Patrol, as well as for the Oberlin Police Department. Bobby served in the US Army for 10 years, thank you very much, and is a combat veteran. He has an 18-year-old son, Brecken, who is currently running track and cross-country for Coker University. Did he beat your record?
Not poor.
Welcome aboard, thank you. Christopher Baco. And family.
Yes.
Welcome aboard. We're not quite yet, we got to get this into this. How are you? Thank you. And the little one's name?
Cole.
All right. I, Christopher Baco.
I, Christopher Baco.
Baco. Do solemnly swear that I am duly qualified.
Do solemnly swear that I am duly qualified.
According to the ordinance of the City of Isle Palms.
According to the ordinance of the City of Isle Palms.
To perform the duties of the position to which I have been selected.
To perform the duties of the position to which I have been selected.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Now the fun part. Chris came to us after spending eight years in the wild dunes, so we stole him from the north end. He's an amazing mechanical and landscaping engineer. Chris is married to Alyssa, and has an adorable 16-month-old son, Cole. Interesting note, Chris is about 40 feet away from Tiger Woods in Augusta, when Tiger won the Masters.
All right.
Now that's cool. Thank you, he is coming to us with the Recreation Ground Supervisor. Now, there's a history of Isle Palms Ground Supervisor, there's my mom Jean, because we fired Donnie from there, and we fired Robert from there, so just remember, we're going to keep you coming. Thank you.
Before Donnie was my dad, so.
Do what?
My dad was the supervisor.
Well, I tell you, you had a great one there. Thank you, welcome aboard, thank you. Okay, reading of the journals of the previous meetings. Regular meeting, August 27, 2019. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes have it. I'm supposed to pass that pen down to Desiree. Citizens' comments. And before we start the citizens' comments, we've got a presentation regarding the 2020 census. Ms. Vermile Simmons is here to give us a PowerPoint presentation. This is very important for us to get the numbers on Isle Palms and across Charleston And just so everybody knows, this does not go against our 30-minute citizens' comments.
And I promise I won't be here for 30 minutes. I promise, I promise. Good evening, mayor, and councilmembers, and municipal members. Thank you for having me. You know, notice it says the 2020 census, and that's where we are, because this is where we start running out. I'm partnership specialist in the Atlantic region, there's seven states in this region. I'm in South Carolina, and throughout South Carolina, I'm one of those partnership specialists. Before I tell you my else, let me give you a little background. The census started in 7090, and I like to say, you know our forefathers were brilliant to think that, you know, we need to give back by counting people, we just want to count you. That's all we wanted to do. US Marshals actually started the first count, and they went on hard side. They wanted us to give back to citizens, because we know that in working, we count, we can get more or less, what the land looks like, how many, how we're growing. So again, it started in 7090, it's in the Constitution. This is a constitutional mandate, so it's nothing that people just think about, this is constitutionally mandated. I told you about the seven states, and our region, 10 years ago, South Carolina was one of the states that gained a seat. We gained a seat, and Georgia gained a seat, and Florida gained two seats. We had three other states that stayed the same. We had Mississippi, and North Carolina, and, um, North Carolina, Mississippi, I know Louisiana lost one. But again, we had three that just remained the same, but we gained a seat. We gained a seat out of Ori County. How did we do that? We did that by counting people. Basically, that's all that's accounted for people. The government has over $375 billion at stake, based on counting people. And when one that, when we gained that seat, that was our seventh congressional seat. So it's power in counting people, and we want to count everyone once and only once in the right place. People say, "Well, I hear you, but I don't want to share my personal information." Know that, we respect your privacy. Every census work, and you've got a couple in the audience, we take an oath, and this oath is until death. We cannot divulge anything we, yet while doing the census. If we do, we run the risk of paying $250,000 in bonds, or five years in prison. And when you go to prison, it's a felony on your license, on your name. And what I say to people, if I was to judge, I would not just give you one, I'd give you both, because when you know better, you do better. When you swear to keep people's privacy, you don't have the right to tell anything. So again, one of the things people don't know is that privacy is what we do. And your census form is sealed for 72 years. Now I say to you, forefathers were brilliant, why 72 years? That was our life expectancy. Some of us have tilted that bar a little bit. And I'm going to say to you right now, I plan to tilt it a whole lot. Because 72 years, I plan to really keep tilting. I say to you, in 2092, where will you be? That's, that'll be 20 years from when census is done, April 1st, 2020. And I plan to, if I'm here, I plan to tilt the bar. So again, confidential, the goal of the 2020 census is to count everyone once and only once in the right place. Where's the right place? Where you spend the majority of your time? Think about that. Where do you sleep? Where you spend the majority of your time? The census information, we will actually send it via mail to you, but we send it to residences. Can you see me? We only send it to residences. And when we send that to your residents, we send it not one time, not two times, four different times after the initial one. After that fourth time, then we'll give you a paper copy to go with it. But again, we want to count them once and only once in the right place. Given that information, we have a new initiative. This time around, you can do it on the internet. Everybody says to me, "I am busy, 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 I don't have time." Well now, you don't even have to make time. Reach down your purse, reach down your pocket, and you can fill out your census form. Once you get the mailer, mid-March, all you need to do is electronically, get online electronic devices, put your address, prompt a lay, and fill out your form. So you don't even have to be in your residence when you do it. Think about it. That's a wonderful idea. I did this 10 years ago, and this is something people asked about, "Why can't we do it on internet?" We do every town on the internet. Census is listening, and we're now trying to get rid of paper, but we've also vetted the process to make sure it's very simple. There are other ways to complete a census form along with that. You can call in a 1-800 number, and if English is not your first language, I think it's wonderful, you can ask for the language of choice. And the person on the other end of the phone will encrypt your answer, so that person will be typing on an encrypted machine, they can't even read it. You'll never ask for your full solicitor, no, never. Will never ask for a backup, no. Think about it. Now you can get internet, you can do it by phone. Again, we do initial mail-out, then more mail-outs, and you get a paper copy. If all else fails, all else, if we are just determined not to comply at some point, come May, we will send someone to knock on your door. We'll call it a numerator. And we are hiring for those positions now, we are hiring, and we need people, because we actually hire people in the areas in which they live. Think about that. The pay is really good. Now I was just asked a minute ago, "What do they pay?" I have no idea. But I was told the pay is really good, it's short-term employment. And it's different for me to come knock on your door, face that you've never seen before in your life, from someone who you may be seeing in your community. So again, please pass that word on, that we are hiring. We support complete count committees, and when I spoke to the mayor and the city administrator, we said, "Complete count, yes, that's what we need to do." Getting trusted voices together, and making a team, and that team of volunteers, and you come up with one plan with one voice, to get people counted. Why is that important? I'm going to give you a example. In 2000, the state of South Carolina, we only counted 16% of people, we were on the bottom. 2010, we counted 75% of people, we got nationally recognized. Think about it, that's the thing. You say, "Well, now Vermile, what about the Isle of Palms, what can we do?" Are you ready for this? In 2000, you only counted 42% of the people. 2010, you raised that bar, and you raised it really high, 72% counted. So why, why are we doing this complete count? Because we want to raise it even higher. The charge is to go at least 5% more, because all this ties into your resources, and it ties into possibly, possibly another seat, if possible. And we don't know whether we will get one or not, but that's a possible, possibility. But I need you to know, when Ori County got that seat 10 years ago, once that happened, you know, you only have so many seats in the House of Representatives, so if somebody gets one, then you have to start shifting lines again, and that's called a resistance. So again, just think about that. Complete count committees are the way to go, because now you've got the voice of the people, helping the people understand why it's important to them to be counted. Again, that committee is paramount, because there's a wide range of activities they can sign on, and how to do it, where to start. We've got some tools in place, where you can look at a map, and kind of, and see exactly tracks of area where maybe you won't get a big count front, and kind of center your ideas and your report on how we're going to get these people to understand they need to move that pendulum to make sure they pull out those forms. So again, the complete count committee can be jury at 10:00. Y'all are not now. 2010, 2020 is right around the corner, April 1st, 2020, that census day. And folks are, "Well, why do I need to start now?" If you don't start now, then you're going to be behind eight ball, because people need to know it's coming, people need to be aware that we need to be counted, so we need to get organized now. This is a timeline talking about the census. We're in the education phase right now. Come January, we'll be in the awareness phase, making everybody aware of census is there, and we need to make it happen. And March, we start with the motivational stage. See, at that point, your complete count committees already start their plan, now they're out motivating you, make sure the cards are out, and you're going to fold this out. Then late, when the numerators come, we may have to remind those of you who just forgot again, you know, those who just didn't do any of the four methods, three methods, you might have to remind you. So we have, the complete count committee helps to remind you. We will also have some PSAs out, trying to remind you also. Then the last phase is a, is a thank you phase. We want to thank you for everything you've done. So again, just because you did what you were supposed to do as a civic-minded person, we just want to say thank you. How would I support you? How do the census bureau support you? I am that person, and I'm assigned to this area, and I will give you support in any way you deem necessary. I can't tell you what your plan should look like, I can't even make your plan for you, but I can train you, and I can encourage you, and I can give you probably some ideas from other places I've been, about some things you might want to try, but I'm just a support Again, we talked about the postcards, and let's just talk more about that postcard presentation coming out in the March, and it talks about the different levels of that, maybe how it responded. By that fourth, by that fourth reminder, you get that paper copy. So those of us who say, "We must have paper," on that fourth reminder, you will get paper. Now, you may have places out in your area that have spotty internet connectivity, we will literally take paper copies to those people, after you have very, very spotty areas. We will literally just go out and take that to them. But internet, telephone, I mean, I just think it's a little, prepare now, get started. You're on now, this is all about you. We are recruiting, we need help. Some people have already filled out forms, and in your packet, there's a flyer, and it tells you how to, and tell people how to actually pull out the form, how to go for y'all. We really need the help, we do. We have a census office here locally, I was just there last week, out in the Goose Creek area, we now have a census office. Shape your future starts here, and starts now. You know, once upon a time, people would say to you, "Ah, it's not about you." But you know something, the census is all about you, it's about no one else, it's all about you. If we don't count the people, we lose out on too many things, we lose out on our sources, we lose out on the possibility, a possibility of maybe showing the country how large we've grown, and maybe something else might be in our course. So again, this is all about you, and it's confidential, it's sealed for 72 years, and this really is a constitutional mandate, that we count you. So if you say, and I've heard along the beach, "We've grown, we've grown, we've grown," the only way that we know that you've grown is by completing a census form. I, Vermile Simmons, partnership specialist, and I thank you, Bill Town.
Thank you.
Vermile, you did a great job. Last time I here, you had some beautiful glasses on. What did you have tonight?
They were on because of our allergies, and I try not to wear them.
But you also brought your sister here to grade you tonight. Sister, how we do?
Very well.
All right, we're going to put this on our website, and thank you, someone, in fact, there's somebody in this audience who's already signed up to help count for y'all.
There we go.
Thank you.
And thank you, Desiree.
Thank you, Vermile.
Okay, under citizens' comments, we had one person sign up tonight, Mr. John McMaster. Excuse me when I say this, would you say your name and your address, please?
John McMaster, 2801 Palm Boulevard. And this doesn't count as my three minutes, but as the Simmons mentioned, the census, I was involved with the special census in Mount Pleasant, and I probably knocked on a thousand doors, interviewed 500 people, and only found one person that would not answer all the questions, so it's not a hard job. He was interesting to talk to, he just refused to answer the question. I had no problem with him other than that, you know, and I had never heard the figures, but I was in charge of Isle of Palms and ought in 10, and I appreciate the fact that we approved a little bit. I didn't get a chance to knock on any doors, because Isle of Palms is a bear, with all the rental properties and second homes, it is not fun to deal with. But I thank you for letting us know we did a good job. All right, what I came here for? I didn't bring my notes, you'll be happy to know, but I will start off by thanking the council for the wonderful job y'all are doing, for the diligence you have spent in our new hires. Most of y'all know that I write letters to the editor, I come to council meetings, and I email back and forth to try to get some points across that I think Isle of Palms is either spinning their wheels on or wasting their time. One of my pet peeves is walking on the beach, finding trash, finding a place to put it, which has been corrected because of the new contractor picking up by barrels. But we also have a lot of things left on the beach, and the one thing that I'd like to talk about are the chairs that are left there. The broken chairs, most of which have been dragged to the barrels to be picked up by Joe Washington, and they're dragged there by people like me. And our city is now putting violation stickers on those chairs to be picked up. Now those chairs cannot be held accountable. I have not talked to one of them yet that apologizes for getting broken and for getting left on the beach. But there are chairs that can be held accountable, and these are the blue chairs. Now these blue chairs don't happen to have any names on them, but their umbrellas do. They have a company name, they have a, you know, a telephone number. And I have yet to find a violation sticker on a blue chair on the beach. There are blue chairs out in front of beachside, I hadn't walked on the beach for the last couple of days, but they had, they've been there three or four weeks, and they have never been, you know, addressed. There are no violation stickers on them. This has happened for, over the years, many times, and I have addressed this concern many times. And it's about time that we find out why these blue chairs are not held accountable. And that's all I've got to say.
Fine, thank you, sir. We had 30 minutes allotted, we only had one person sign up, just since we haven't passed our rules, is there anybody else who wants to speak before I close the citizens' comments? Hearing none, we're closing that. I do want to make one point while everybody's here and anybody leaves, that we have an employee of the year that was set up by Leo LaHamberry, and unfortunately, the deadline is September 30th, we only have one or two applications then, and if anybody knows of a great employee for the City of Isle of Palms, please send us an email, because this is a worthy, number one, I think everybody in our city employee is fantastic, so I don't, I'd be afraid to say anything, but please, if you know anybody who does extra work for you, or for the island, please send in their name. Thank you. Reports from standing committees, Ways and Means, up first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Ways and Means Committee met at 5 o'clock, September 17th, in council chambers. Treasurer Suggs, a financial statement summary, and through August 31st, revenues were at 11% of actual budget year-to-date, that's about where it needs to be. In all the funds expenditures were at 9%. General fund revenues were about 10%. Just wanted to remind you about where our general fund revenues come from. The property tax, that usually comes in October, November, and mainly December, because people want to get tax deduction for paying those property taxes for the year-end. The, you'll notice on the general fund schedule, there's no local office, sales tax received this year, this first two months of fiscal year. That's because the amount received was accrual, that reflects back to last fiscal year, and that'll come out when the audit report does. The business licenses, we have contractors that are coming in all the time and getting business license, but the line share of the business license are received between January 1st and April 30th, which is the deadline for so many business tax returns and payments. Rental licenses are running at 43%, and they are due on July 31st, so that's why that percentage number is so high. Building permits stay pretty much steady throughout the year, that's at 13% or $72,000. Parking revenues for the year-to-date is at 37% or $354,000, and we had an increase in parking. And we had an increase in parking fees last fiscal years. All others, if you wondered about that, that's the court fees. Mainly the court fees, most of that is the parking tickets that were generated in there. There's also interest income and recreation fees are included there. The general fund year-to-date expenditures are 15%. August notes, for the first two months of fiscal year 20, financial results are as expected. General fund revenues are slightly ahead of the prior year, and general fund expenditures are slightly below both the prior year and the fiscal year budget target of 17%. Some of the revenues collected this month relate to fiscal year 19 and therefore have been accrued back to June. No significant financial variances or trends were noted. And currently, the forecast for the year is the same as the budget. Cash positions and fund balances are currently strong due to the city's good financial performance in fiscal year 19. And little spending on the major projects that we have coming up in this fiscal year, such as the public safety building repair. And if you look at the cash balances comparatively from August 31st, 19 to August 31st, 18, we're at $20,000,117,000 in all funds versus $17,103,000 last year. Revenue has been just full accommodation fees. Revenue is received first payment in July of $195,000. Same thing, exact same number, of course, for beach preservation fee, $195,000. That percentage is the same. We only have received one payment, the first payment from Charleston County Accommodation Tax pass-through of $370,500. Total fiscal years for accommodations tax, tourism-related portion only, the total for the fiscal year is $1,298,212, which is 7.7% increase over last year, or the previous year. Hospitality tax collections were up over July. There were $106,000 in August. And there was no disbursements in, as far as project expenditures. And so that ended the financial report. And then we have several items, Mr. Mayor, that I'd like for you to take over to ask for motions and approval and discussion on these, I think it's seven, seven items.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. The first one is the proof of a refurbishment of Tower 102 in an amount of $600,000.
A motion to approve.
Mr. Chair said something to me because I was out and he heard about a $600,000 tower. So let me clarify that.
People jumping up and down about it.
It's a 95-foot ladder truck. And instead of having to buy a new one, refurbishing this one is a tremendous savings of over 50%. The funds will be $300,000 from capital, municipal aid tax funds, $150,000, and state aid tax funds, $150,000. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Unanimous. Number two, replacement of four patrol vehicles. Budget capital projects, $44,000, municipal aid tax, $88,000, state aid tax, $88,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion on this?
I just...
Yes, ma'am.
I just, we're replacing with large pickup trucks that I feel like we should stick with the SUVs or patrol vehicles. I just feel like they're a little intimidating, so that's why we'll be voting against this.
Well, that's a good point. And if we don't mind, maybe Chief can come up and explain why we're switching over from SUVs to the pickup trucks. Thank you, sir.
No problem. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. The reason we will be switching over is right now, the, what was budgeted for were five SUVs. However, the SUVs are not on state contract right now. They will possibly be coming on in November, but at a higher price than what was originally budgeted for. The trucks are currently on there. They're lower budget than what we budgeted for, for the SUVs. And as we're looking at instituting a marine unit within the police department, we need to have a vehicle on patrol that has the ability to pull those boats so that we're not pulling from other departments. Plus, it never hurts to have more variety within your vehicles on staff. You never know what we're going to come across. I understand they are bigger. They may look a little aggressive to some, some individuals, but a lot of people expect a beach to have some trucks in their fleet for, for police work. But I completely understand Ms. Rice's stance on everything, and we can certainly move forward. Are there any questions that I can answer maybe with?
This is for just one truck, correct?
This is, we're getting four trucks. We originally budgeted for five SUVs.
Okay.
We're moving for four. That'll give us more opportunity to have them. If somebody's out sick, we can still get our boat.
And what does the rest of our fleet look like?
The rest of them are still, we're still moving forward with SUVs. I'm not trying to change our fleet at all. We have majority SUVs. We have several sedans that kind of work on the beach, but tend to get stuck more than the SUVs and the trucks, obviously. But the movement is still to move forward outfitting mostly with SUVs, just the four trucks.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm curious about gas mileage difference?
They are eco-friendly, so they will actually have a, that's there, that's how they, they put it on there. So they will have a lower gas mileage than what you're picturing under your trucks. These aren't the big monster trucks or anything like that. They're just a F-150 that has a four-by-four function on it with a tow package built into it, and it's built patrol-ready.
Super.
Mr. Chief, if you don't mind, I think I heard that they are roomier than the existing...
They, they are. That was my first question. I sent officers to go, we actually went to test drive the new SUVs, and they were there. And I said, "Well, drive the truck. Let's see what it looks like." And it turned out that the backseat of the truck, we were mostly concerned about transporting individuals in the backseat, it's actually more roomy than the SUVs that we currently have. So I think that's going to be a good positive. And one change that we're instituting with this, in the past, when we purchased vehicles, some were purchased without cages, which means they weren't able to transport. We're changing that. Any marked patrol vehicle will now have cages built into it so that anybody that wears a uniform has the ability to transport regardless of their rank or where they're assigned.
Any other questions? Yes?
Just one question. So these are 150 pickup trucks?
F-150, yes, sir.
F-150. And I realize that in our public works department, I'm sure we have a number of pickup trucks as well that are both 150, 250 as well. And I'm not sure if Donnie has had any complaints about them being too aggressive on the streets. So...
How do you like your new job?
I'm loving it. I live, I work on paradise. What could be worse? If our biggest complaint is we're talking about trucks versus SUVs, I'm in heaven.
Don't you forget it.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions concerning the vehicle purchase? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
No.
One aye. Thank you. Motion passes. Motion to approve a consideration proposal for SMNE in an amount of $32,925,000 for geotechnical investigation for the Isle of Palms Marina Dock Replacement Project. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second? Discussion?
Let's get done.
Hearing none? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Unanimous. Ah, this is a good one. Provo of our millidrate staying the same.
Motion to approve.
Do I hear a second? Second? Any discussion?
This means no tax increase, right?
That's why I read that.
Tax rate.
Okay. Any other discussion on that? I don't think anybody's going to debate that one. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Unanimous. Recommendation from the Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee for the city to sponsor Pure Theater in an amount of $8,000.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Any discussion?
I just want to say, this is for a play on Sullivan's about Osceola.
Yeah.
And so I just, that it's not just pure theater in general, it's for a specific event on Sullivan's.
And if you want, we can suspend the rules of order and allow Sharon Gracie to address council to give us some background on that.
Motion to suspend.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Sharon?
Oh, God. This is a fun one. You're in paradise. You heard the chief? That's right, I am in paradise. I'm Sharon Gracie. I am the artistic director of Pure Theater. Thank you for having me. I have to tell you, my world is so scripted. So usually, if I'm speaking in front of someone, it's because everyone has applied every last word. Standing up in front of all of you is a little nerve-wracking for me, so bear with my nervousness. Thank you. So Osceola's Muse is a project that is a collaboration between Pure Theater, visual artist Jonathan Green, members of our Native American community, and members of our Gullah community. And it's exploring the unique and beautiful relationship between Osceola and his muse or his wife, Morning Dew, who was a mix of enslaved mother and a Native American father. Osceola himself was also mixed race. He was Native American and Scottish. He also died, as you may know, out on Sullivan's Island. So this partnership is telling that story between those two. And it is helping us achieve what we're so interested in at Pure, which is telling diverse stories from multiple members of our community, not just certain members of our community. And now, in our 17th season, we feel really fortunate that we are able to do this kind of work. In addition to the performance, which will take place over four nights in October, October 11th and 12th, and then on the 18th and 19th, there's also school shows, which will perform for children on Sullivan's Island Elementary, as well as the middle schools. And there's also a partnership with Sullivan's Island Elementary School that the children are building the sets. So it's really been this amazing opportunity for me and for Megan Woldavor, who is our new managing director. And y'all, she comes from Chicago, so she must really feel like she's in paradise. But to spend time doing this kind of work when so much of our day can feel probably a lot like y'all's, which is kind of a grind, but then when you have an opportunity to work with people who don't get to do this every day, their joy in just this process has been so affirming of the power of live performance that I just cannot begin to tell you what it has meant to us as a company and to me as artistic director. So that's Osceola's Muse, and I couldn't be more pleased to present it to you today. Thank you.
That was unscripted.
Randy Bell, my new favorite person.
Good job.
Thank you.
Great job. Thank you so much. Any discussions?
Just a...
Yes, sir.
Ongoing, more so for the record, that funds like this from the, from the aid tax recommendations aren't things that we can use on things like drainage. It's not like we're, we're using this money for something that could be used for something like improving a drainage ditch. And I think it's just good to continuously provide education as to, we have funds that are specified for certain uses, and this is one of those uses of this fund.
Anyone else? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes, heaven, I can't wait to get my ticket.
Yes.
All right. Moving on. Recommendation from the Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee for the city to sponsor the Lovello Bike Ride in an amount of $5,000. This is a bike ride for the cancer research here in Charleston. And they've done it across country, and they are wanting to do it here in Charleston. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
I heard a...
Second.
Motion and a second, and any discussion? We may have, if we want to suspend the rules of order, to have Shannon Rice come and address council with her request.
Probably not necessary.
Well, we don't have to.
We don't embarrass at all we did last one. See, I just, just, no, let's talk...
Okay. All right. I don't think we're, need that. No questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Unanimous. Tell Dr. Gustavo thank you.
Any takers on riding?
This one right here. And he's going to need a long one.
I propose that council, to allow this should happen, they should all ride and wear spandex.
That might hurt the attendance. From this point of view. All right, moving on. I'm sorry.
She does have something to say.
Yes, ma'am. Please. You came all this way, why not? It's a great, worthy cause.
Thank you for having me. I'm Shannon Rice. I am the ride manager for Lovello at Hollings Cancer Center. And I just want to share something that happened last week with your fire department. I don't know if you're aware, but they are registered as a team to ride. And in the, in going out there and speaking to them, I brought a head and neck, one of the top head and neck surgeons in the country with me. His name is Dr. Terry Day, who was unaware of the cancers that firefighters are now starting to be diagnosed with, which happens to be head and neck, skin, and testicular cancer. And the reason is their uniforms don't suffice to cover them properly so that they are safe from those cancers. And hearing that, Dr. Terry Day decided that it was time to do something about it and has offered to do some research with his researchers and accompany them to Columbia. So we're really hoping that all of this goes through and that we can really help our firefighters, not just here in Isle of Palms, but across the state. So I want to thank all of you for supporting us, and I'm happy to register anyone who might want to ride with us, so thank you.
I might have heard a challenge from the police department. And council members. Yes, ma'am.
I think that sounds like a news story to me.
I think we get some reporters here. Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Passes unanimously. Mr. Chair of Ways and Means, I think that ends...
Hearing is my report.
Thank you, sir. Moving on. Public Safety Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Public Safety Committee met September 16th at 9:00 a.m. All committee members were present, as well as administration and staff. Under citizens' comments, we had a number of folks come up and speak. We got Howard Hugh from our famous beach Santa come up and speak about our cigarette and tobacco ordinance, as well as folks from the South Carolina Aquarium. We had the pages from Forest Railroad One come and speak about the, our dilapidated structures bill, or bill ordinance. And so it was, we had a lot of citizens' comments. Under old business, we had consideration of 2019, which was the discussion of dilapidated structures. It was, we're trying to get the city to amend that, trying to work out the kinks in it and to figure out what we can do. And there was, there was a lot of good discussion with that, and they're still working on that, that program. What we're able to do is still kind of up in the air, based on the discussion that we've had from Douglas, Douglas Kerr in the building department. We had some update on recommendations for crosswalks at 41st Avenue to the second gate in Wild Dunes. We've had some residents who wanted to look at installing crosswalks there, but in order to do so, it was going to be expensive, and it was going to be a really, it was going to take a lot of, it would take a lot of work and for the city to act over that portion of Palm Boulevard. So we're just going to continue to work with our signage that we have going on there. And we had some discussion of our beach patrol officers. Chief Cornet indicates that he intends to fill all 10 budgeted positions this next year and split them up as beach patrol and street patrol. As for update on the encouragement for the Palm Boulevard golf cart path, it has not been able to go through yet. We're still working with SCDOT and the... We had some discussion of implementing four feet off-the-road pavement, parking on Palm Boulevard from 42nd to 57th. There's a lot of, a lot of things that will, the council will be discussing in regards to parking. Not only, not only that, but changing the hours in which parking is regulated as well. So I think when the council's going to have to go through and do an after-action meeting about our parking and where we need to go from here, and we'll incorporate all those changes that we need to do at that time, both here and up in the South and New Orleans as well. We had some consideration, we discussed the consideration of a smoking man in the beach, and it was sent to us as to how it could be enforced. The chief basically indicated that it could be enforced, certain aspects of it, some of it would be a little more difficult as, for like the chewing tobacco type situations, but the, but he said he would do what he was instructed to do. We had, we discussed the refurbishment of the tower, and we moved on with that. We did have discussion of... We did have a discussion of, which I don't understand why we don't have this, but a discussion of an ordinance for failure to stop on police command. So if you have somebody who is run, who is instructed to stop, and they run, there's no ordinance that stops, that's arrestable offense. So the only way you can arrest them is if you've already started arresting them, and it's a resisting arrest. So we're working forward on that. We already discussed the four vehicles, and moving on, that is really the most of my report.
I think we got one action item as for...
Correct. And it is the approval of the agreement with Charleston County. As you know, we went through and had mutual aid agreement last month with Sullivan's Island. So, but with the new law changes, we need to have an agreement with Charleston County, which basically, even though this is Charleston County jurisdiction, they didn't come over here, but it was not allowing us to go over and serve and help Charleston County. So I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve the mutual aid agreement with Charleston County Sheriff's Office.
Wait a second.
So moved.
Okay, discussion. Maybe the chief could come up and kind of give us some background on that. Keep you in two different locations tonight.
Get my steps in.
You and me both.
Is this in reference to the...
Mutual aid.
So essentially, when I spoke with the sheriff and advised him that we did not have mutual aid agreements with most of the municipalities, he said, "Do you have one with us?" And I said, "No, sir, we do not." And he said, "So you can't come help me if I ask for assistance outside of your jurisdiction." I said, "No, sir." "We'll fix that," is what he said. So here I am in front of you, trying to fix that. But he did send it over. All he's asked is for a resolution, saying that it was adopted. I would highly recommend doing this. We work with the sheriff's department quite frequently, and the ability to work seamlessly with them outside of our agency would be really important in helping to protect our citizens.
Is Goat Island and Dewey's Island, are they policed by the sheriff's department?
That's correct. Yes, ma'am. And that's part of the reason we really need it. So we're closer, especially once we have that boat. It's been, there've been times when Goat Island needed somebody or something like that, and they've had to wait for a marine unit from Charleston County to get here. And this will give us that ability where they can call and say, "Hey, can you at least go secure it until we can get somebody there?" And when you're looking at life and properties, keeping that safe, that's crucial time.
Any other questions? If I'm not mistaken, the great sheriff lives here on Isle of Palm. We better pass this tonight.
I'm president.
Okay. Do I hear a motion? Everybody in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? It's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Perfect. And our next meeting day is scheduled for...
Oh, I have a question.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
In regard to the beach patrol officers, this may not directly apply, but in Public Works, we've talked about, it's come up that on the beach at nighttime, there's a lot more activity than maybe we would want there to be. And so I'm hopeful that there's kind of a party vibe going on, especially around Front Beach, that is contributing, it's been in the context of our discussion of litter, but in general, it sounds like it might be a problem area that I hope our police force will be able to address more.
Okay.
And they can with those new two, with those new pickup trucks.
Yeah. Okay.
Yes, sir. What's the status of the enhanced safety measures at Breach Inn?
We're, we are still working with that. We want to collaborate with Sullivan's Island on that and try to move forward. I think we're still trying to get some praise in on it as well.
One question.
Yes, ma'am.
But we're moving forward.
So where did you land with the smoking ban on the beach? I didn't really hear where you landed. I just heard you discussed it.
Yep. Our, what was directed to Public Safety on how to enforce it, and we did have that discussion that it could be enforced.
Okay.
But the landing was to work with Sullivan's Island administratively.
Okay.
Yeah, the committee did not make a recommendation, so the next step will be for Public Works Committee to review the ordinance as drafted, which is the same ordinance that's discussed by the Public Safety Committee. I have shared our ordinance, the draft ordinance, to with Sullivan's. The administrator there has indicated that there is some support in their town council for approval of a smoking ban. So we'll bring that up to the, for the next Public Works Committee meeting for final action and recommendations to city council.
Any other questions for Public Safety? And your next meeting, you said?
Will be 9:00 a.m. Monday, October 7th, here in City Hall. And...
So when's your report?
So is my report. And just to say, I'm at, just for the record, or for just conversation, I was, I flew in last night at 1:30 into O'Hare, I mean, O'Hare. Into Orlando from Hope Town, and then drove up here. So I'm a little exhausted, a little tired. Spent, you know, a little more than nine days, 10 days down there. Set up the EOC down there and got them under control, but if, if we ever have to go through what they're going through now, it is going to be, it's eyes wide open. I mean, it is, it's catastrophic of the events that are going down there. So I said, I'm a disaster fund, making sure that's stable, and just being prepared and getting... The problems that I'm seeing is communications, problems I'm seeing is just debris and trash, and it's just, it's horrific of what people are...
I thank you for going down there. Yes. And it's a case of not a matter of if, but a matter of when.
We had a pretty big one like that 30 years ago.
Yeah. And you know what, James? It was, you know, it was a very somber moment, because we, it was what we called, and I send, some of you are my Facebook friends, it was, for us, they call it day 20, for us, it was day 21.
Yeah, the same thing.
It was like, I don't know what it was. It was a blur. Nobody knows what day is what down there, but every morning we do our announcement, and it's, today is day 22, today is day 23, and it's going to be that way for years to come.
Yeah, after Hugo, we couldn't get the debris off the island, and we had, the parking lots were full of people's household goods and burning debris for months, right, chief? For months.
Yeah. So, but yeah, it was...
Eye opening.
It was eye opening. And what, it was, so it was good for me to be there as well and realize what we needed, steps that we need to take as well. And things have changed a lot the last 30 years, and technology-wise, and what we were able to set up and do, and such a small infrastructure is pretty amazing.
It just, it also makes you realize the importance of building codes, and bridges, and things like that, you know?
Right. And like I said, well, a lot of these places were hundreds of years old, you know, and some of them still survived. Our office was still standing, it had four inches of water in it from a 15-foot, 25-foot storm surge.
Jeez.
But it had four inches of water in it, but there are other places that, you know, a storm surge at sea level at 25 foot, there was nothing, nothing left.
Nothing.
So...
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for doing that. Public Works.
That's me. Public Works Committee met at 5:00 Thursday, September 19th. All members were present, as well as appropriate staff. The minutes of the previous meeting were approved, and we had noted citizens' comments. Director Pitts gave his report. Garbage and debris removal are up from this time last year. Under old business, update on Phase 3 drainage. Staff and attorneys have executed the contracts that commit the city to 30% of the design pre-permitting, and design and engineering work is underway. Very exciting. Update on trial use of the littered trash can. Unfortunately, we had a worst-case scenario with the trial use of the littered trash can. And we remove all the trash cans from the beach in the event of an impending storm, which we had with Dorian, which we removed all 127 trash cans? Isn't that the right, 157? And when Public Works went to remove the new littered can, it was filled with water, and it took four men and a dolly to remove it from the beach. So now we realize that that is not an option. So we will use them maybe on the street side, but, so we learned that it was kind of baptism by fire. Now, respect. Under new business, we deferred until next month the request by Isle of Palms Water and Sewer Commission for approval of a $16 million bond. And then we discuss Front Beach beautification. And Assistant Director Osaro is working on a phase plan to approach front beach improvements. Areas that need improvement include landscaping, irrigation, and lighting. So he is working on a plan to get that underway. Update on Hurricane Dorian debris removal. The Public Works team has completed the first and second pass of the island, and we just could not be more grateful for just the rock star employees that we have in Public Works. I mean, they went so above and beyond and worked so many extra days, and thank you, thank you. We also did receive some assistance, assistance from Charleston County, and we are so grateful for that as well. So thank you to Charleston County as well. We went into an executive session to discuss contractual matters related to Isle of Palms Water and Sewer Bond requests. No decisions were made, no action was taken. And our next meeting is Thursday, October 3rd at 8:00 a.m., and we adjourned at 6:05 p.m., and that ends my report.
Do we have any questions for the chair? I would like to also acknowledge that Director Pitts and his crew were absolutely stellar, and everything I've heard since Dorian has been, wow. Great job. Recreation, no meeting in September. Personnel, Mr. Moy.
All right. The Personnel Committee met on Monday, September 16th at 4:30. All members were present. We also met yesterday for a couple of special meetings that the topics are addressed in here, so I'll give a full update. Those meetings were attended by Councilmember Rice, and myself, and Administrator Fugoso. Starting with the meeting on the 16th, we started with old business, as there were no citizen comments regarding the status of hiring an assistant city administrator. I was hoping to be able to tell you that we had made an offer and made an acceptance, but I can't make that. But we're super close, like really close. If we had this meeting tomorrow, I might be able to make that. So that's how close we are on a decision. So we'll, we'll have soon a new employee in the City Hall. We got an update on the annual employee appreciation event, which is going to be held on October the 18th at 11:00 a.m. And I'm going to reiterate the mayor's request to the audience that we would love more nominations for the Leola Handberry Award. So again, we have just a great example of Donnie Pitts and his crew, obviously, you know, our fire and police. We just have such an incredible staff here, and I don't mean to not single anybody out, but we've got an incredible staff here, and we would love to see a lot of nominations and a lot of acknowledgement for the incredible team that we have, and family, that's what I know we like to call it. So please, if you, if you think of us some experiences over the last year, I know I've got a few in the last week with getting, getting the street cleaned up, man. We moved on to consideration of applications for the Isle of Palms Water and Sewer Commission vacancies. There are two vacancies that by code, city council needs to appoint, the new commissioners. We have begun interviewing the five applicants who applied for those two vacancies. We've interviewed three of the five, and expect to conclude those interviews on October the 1st, and hopefully make recommendations to council in the October, at the October meeting. We got an update on the city council orientation and training handbook. Staff presented us with an outline of the key topics that they'd like to address, pulling from a whole bunch of resources from MASC and other publicly available documents, as well as really personalizing it and customizing it to our city. And we're, we're really excited about the direction that's taken, but right now, we just took a look at the outline and gave some input on things that might want to be added or considered. We had some discussion around the city administrator employment agreement. That discussion was taken into executive session. No decisions were made. And I guess, do we want to go ahead now and...
Yes, sir.
All right. So yesterday, we did meet on that again, and we made the recommendation from personnel to accept the agreement as it was presented to council last week at Ways and Means. So I will make that in the form of a motion.
I'll second.
We'll do a duel.
Okay.
Any discussion? Discussions? Yes, sir.
Yeah, there were, in the executive session, there were questions asked, and I specifically asked about contract separation from salary. So there was an initial recommendation from the committee as to a salary level. That went up, and I know I had concerns with, with what we're doing with salaries. I mean, frankly, we did the COLA increase. We're now recommending another increase, and the administrative position will be eligible for another increase in January. And I just, candidly, I have a difficulty with this council's feelings, frankly, on what we do with salaries. We have salaries that continue to escalate, and we don't pay enough attention to it. Every dollar is a dollar fifty when you add benefits into it. Right? So where are we in the norm on city manager salaries with this recommendation?
Is your question...
Is it above the original recommendation from the Personnel Committee, or...
The original recommenda, the recommendation in our first discussion?
We have an interim level, correct? And I thought that was, when we appointed interim, I thought that salary level was where we intended to keep the base of the salary.
Let me, all the way up. So when the current city administrator was appointed as interim, the automatic, there was an automatic adjustment to the bottom range of the publicly specified range of salary.
Not bottom range, a bottom...
The low end of the range.
It's a range, and it was, she was automatically elevated to that bottom range. And per every single city employee that received a COLA, their every, every range was increased. So that was the, that was the salary up until, well, to date, to present, that has been the salary. Does that answer your question?
Partially. Look, I, you know, honestly, supporter, love her, glad we hired her. I just think when we think about salaries, we're a few months away from a whole nother evaluation period. This job was effective in May, and we're going to raise the salary retroactively to May, and we'll have another discussion about performance metrics come January. It just seems to me that we're very inconsistent in the way we look at salaries, and I'll leave it at that.
Any other, oh, sorry. Mr. Moy, any other questions?
Well, I'll just reiterate some of what I said at the Ways and Means, which was this past year and a half now, I think has been extraordinary, and an extraordinary set of circumstances in which our interim, and now city administrator, was effectively doing two jobs, and doing an outstanding job. So I think there's a good rationale for making that additional sum now.
Mr. Mayor, just one comment. When we're talking about this additional amount, that means that within nine months, there was a 5.7% increase.
Correct.
And our other employees got 2.2% in the COLA. And we, as a council, had said that the COLA plus the merit was not to be more than 2.5. We had combined that number so that we would not be getting this 3%, 4%, 5%, 6%, which we've done in the past. So my concern is, it's 5.7 within nine months.
I'll just react, I guess, to both comments, because these, these discussions are anchoring on an old position, an interim position, versus a newly hired person in a newly hired position for, for that individual. And so there was a negotiation on salary, and frankly, the, the negotiation was 3.5% above the actual minimum that we have given ourselves that is based in data, in terms of, this is, this is literally the lowest range that we would pay anybody. It's 3.5% above that. The, the impact over years of that 3.5% is, I'm not going to say it's, it's not significant, but it's, it's not, that is not where we're going, that's not the hill that I want to die on. There's other, there's other things that are more important to me than not showing the respect and appreciation to someone who I think has earned that. So that's...
I'll make one final comment, if I may.
Mr. Ward, please. Yes, sir.
We seem to have short memories. It doesn't seem like that long ago that people were bailing from the police department left and right, and the reason was compensation. You know, so we went through a painful exercise and realization that to keep good people, you're going to have to pay them. It's very competitive. And... It's very competitive in Charleston County for government employees. And I trust Mr. Moy and what he does on that committee, so I trust his recommendation.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Again, I'm going to, you know, hopefully, this will all be public, as it should be, as we've discussed salaries. So we're being very secretive sitting up here, but frankly, again, and I made the comment in the executive session, in five years at a 3% raise, I think we're at the old administrator salary. So, you know, we need to get our arms around salaries in the city, and I'm not suggesting...
Is that the case with or without the raise? It is, is my answer. So if you're upset with the range?
No, I'm not upset with that, I'm not upset with the performance. I think we need to get our arms around city salaries and be very open with the public on what percentage of the money that we have without raising taxes, right?
Okay. Mr. Kinghorn has his hand up next, and then Mr. Smith.
I'll defer to the lady to my right.
I just want to add that I do agree with Councilmember Bell that we should be transparent, fully transparent, and follow the lead of other cities, and I would imagine that means divulging the terms of the agreement publicly, and that's my only comment.
Thank you. Councilman Kinghorn.
On a lighter note, I think it's important that our citizens know that this astute body out here does not benefit from a COLA. And I don't know what that's all about, John. Jimmy Ward, how long have you been serving on council?
A long time.
And never got a COLA, never. It's unbelievable.
The kick in the teeth.
All right, thank you. Any other, yes, ma'am.
So we went through an amazing process of interviewing people that came from other cities. I think we made 100% the right choice in Desiree Fregoso as our administrator. I think that we should all be giving a vote of confidence. I truly wonder if it was someone else who was moving here from another place, what their requirements would have been salary-wise. I have a feeling it would have been much higher, and we would have been paying for moving and this and that and other expenses, so I just, I can't, I just feel like we should be so thrilled and happy and welcoming and feel like this is over. We want to hire a wonderful assistant for her, and we all need to be supportive, and that's where I fall.
Sure, supportive of her.
Okay, I'm going to have to put in my, oh, yes, ma'am, please.
Just one more thing. I want to make sure that everybody understands, this is not about a person.
No.
This is about a position, and what we are putting in this position and the kind of increases we have done. You know, whenever you do increases for a position, it has ramifications, and that's all I'm saying, that we are at 60...
And they can be really good ramifications.
We are at 63% fixed cost. The national average is 50, and yet we keep, and I'm not saying, again, take it out of the person, but take it in positions. How many positions are we going to be looking at that now will say, why not 5.7? Why not 3.5? I mean, I just think that this is a precedent, that we've got really good people, and like we said, we want to keep our really good people. Well, now we have set this precedent, and as they come to us, we may be put in that same situation, and that fixed cost is going to keep going up and up and up, and then we're going to turn to our residents and say, we need a tax increase. And they're going to say, why didn't you hold down on the expenses? Why didn't you look at those fixed expenses? That's all I'm saying. This is not a personal...
Yes, sir.
Just total, I absolutely agree. And by the way, just a quick, I'm going to give a quick little allegory from Steve Jobs, because he loves, he had this great tale that he's told about a rock tumbler, where he met a friend who threw some rocks in a rock tumbler, a few days later said, come on back, and he was just amazed at how that process changed the rocks, and he compared that to debate and said, that's what debate is like, and everyone comes out and ideas come out better for it. And so I can, I really appreciate the fact that we have a council that has positive, productive debate, and while we don't always agree, we always, we all want the same end goal, and we're always cordial and friendly, and I appreciate it about you guys. So I'll stop being warm and fuzzy.
Okay, I like that.
That wasn't my, that wasn't my comment. That was just my intro, I'm just going to start.
It's been a minute. It's been three minutes.
The thing about paying for quality, I'm sure everyone here has bought something that was lower quality, and they had to go and replace it after a short amount of time, and I'm talking about replacing people. Just saying, the value you get from investing in good people, one of the first things that Desiree did under her appointment was save the city $70,000 a year, and that's, that's why we invest in high quality, and that's why we are not concerned with sometimes spending a little bit more to get the best people in the best position, because we know it's not necessarily going to give us a savings in that type of real direct manner all the time, but sometimes it's going to result in getting additional grants or finding additional sources of funding. And so it's, yes, we have to be, I totally, wholeheartedly agree that the issue of fixed costs and the ongoing increase, and yes, most of that comes from personnel, that's something we have to constantly be looking at, and I think we have a good dialogue ongoing with the department heads and with Desiree and the leaders of the city that needs to be on almost every agenda that we have when we're talking about growing our teams. But I also think that it makes sense to invest in our people in this way.
But we're not going to start now.
Well, we're having this...
Okay, may I have my comment?
We have to start at some point, yes.
My comment is, you know, we've got great department heads. We've hired two great department heads this year, and they bring positive results, and one of the department heads, Desiree, who worked for the city for three years prior, comes in with experience from previous storms, says past hurricane threat Dorian, to go in there and watch her in action was incredible, and watching our chiefs in action was incredible, and our Public Works, they all work together. Desiree brings a positive, youthful aspect to it, and I'm going to vote in affirmative.
For the one hundred percent, everybody spoke at least three times.
Okay.
Some of us were.
He's got one left.
And my last one didn't work very well, so on a lighter, could we please vote?
All right. All those in favor of this position being hired, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nays?
It's not what you're voting on.
Favor of the...
City Administrator Employment Agreement.
Employment Agreement, I'm sorry.
As written.
As written.
Do it again.
Do it again.
Do over.
Approval of the City Administrator Employment Agreement as written. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Aye.
Two nays. Ferran and Bell.
With no amendments.
Okay. Mr. Moy, anything else on the personnel?
Oh, yeah, I'm still talking, huh? There was, as a matter of fact, and it's related to another item on our agenda, we did discuss the ordinance to provide clarity to the rules of procedure during public meetings. We did not have any recommendations to make to council, but I would like to highlight a primary output, I think, of this discussion. We did have a lengthy discussion about this, and at the heart of our discussion was the fact that we really appreciate public comment, and I hope all of you hear this and take it to heart that it's really critical for us to be able to do our jobs better. This is a great place to get all of council together, oddly enough, and we don't want any ordinance change to in any way discourage or otherwise prevent folks who want to have a voice, who want to share with council from doing so. And so we felt like there was enough flexibility in the ordinance, as exhibited today, but that was our main concern, that we want to ensure that our citizenry doesn't get the wrong message and that they understand that more than anything else, we hope that this, these changes would actually help encourage more participation by giving a voice to those who might be a little bit more timid.
Thank you very much. So when's your report?
We're going to meet again in October, October the 1st. Oh, yeah, we've got more interviews, so, yes.
Great report.
There it is, so it ends.
Moving on, Real Property.
Real Property. Real Property met on Wednesday, September 18th. All council members were present, administrative staff was present as well. There were no citizens' comments, there were no comments from the Marina tenants. We had an update on the status of the Marina Dock's rehabilitation project and permitting, and Mr. Kirby Marshall from ATM was present. The regulatory permits for the project have been submitted to the Army Corps of Engineers, NOCRM. No public comments have been received up to this point on that process. Moving on to the status of the Title Wave Watersports Dock permitting, there's two pieces of this. One, we got a verbal denial from the Army Corps of Engineers as to the allowance of approximately two and a half feet of incursion into the intercoastal waterway center line. That was verbally denied. The good news in that is, we don't have to move pilings, we can take a saw and basically cut two and a half feet off and save a lot of money, but we are going to have to do that work to be compliant to the Army Corps of Engineers. The other confusing piece that was also discussed briefly, there are separate OCRM violations on the current use. That permitting has not begun, the permits have not been submitted for that, and that's still part of the process with Kirby Marshall working with both the city and Title Wave Watersports on whether or not they're going to allow the continued use at the level that it has been. And that's probably still some months away, depending on how quickly OCRM reacts to that. We already covered the proposals from S and ME for the geotechnical investigation, that was discussed earlier. We didn't say what it was. It's actually, you know, the, where we put the pilings being permissible substrate underneath to secure the piling because we do the dock rehab. We had a discussion of the status of the Public Safety Building Rehab Project. Administrator Fregoso said the drawings are in the final stage, and all is going according to plan, minus the two weeks we lost for Hurricane Dorian. Update on the Marina Restaurant RFP process from John Chalfy and Leon Associates. We discussed the fact that we had three proposals. We did not discuss the content of those proposals, and instead recommended a special meeting. That meeting is now scheduled for 5:00 p.m. this Thursday with all three of the submissions, not requests for proposal, but offers. All three, as I understand, will be in attendance, and that obviously is a public meeting to begin to put in front of the public what the possibilities are for the Morgan Creek Grill Restaurant. Status of request for information for municipal parking lot usage. Administrator Fregoso reported she will begin working on a request for information to get ideas for what we're allowed to do. We are constrained in what we can do in the way that that land was purchased. Same discussion, ordinance 2019-17 to provide clarity to the rules of procedure. We did, we did have an interesting point that Councilmember Ward brought up, is that it would actually be helpful to know what people are going to talk about. Sometimes they're very on topic as it relates to our council agenda, sometimes we have discussions that are not at all topical to what we're discussing, and we're frankly not prepared, not that we should be answering those questions during council. But to Councilmember Moy's point, the idea is not to discourage people from coming forward and having a conversation. We had a discussion of potential projects for Charleston County Green Belt funding. Green Belt monies are allocated to the city in the amount of $103,613, and as we've done in the past, Desiree will bring forward list of project ideas that we will be continuously reviewing to ensure that we spend that money. We're happy to help them spend the money. No miscellaneous business, no executive session. We adjourned, and the next meeting will be Wednesday, October 2nd at 9:00 a.m., with the exception of, don't forget, the meeting, and I don't know if we have it on the sign yet, people were asking me about the meeting on Thursday.
Yes.
Yeah. Thursday at 5:00.
It's Thursday, September 26th at 5:00 p.m. It's going to be a special City Council meeting to go over the proposals of the city received for the...
Questions for Real Property. Yes, ma'am.
So Title Wave, I'm just trying to figure, I'm really having a hard time keeping up with the whole. So where are we? Do they, because as we roll into the next year, in terms of a lease, I just...
So candidly, I was on, I thought we had submitted, I'm going to use the term variance, it's not the correct term. So they were informed in September of 18, when the permits were in their name, that there were a list of violations, and we got that documentation, we weren't aware of it until roughly April of 2019.
February, around February.
Okay, February.
I can answer.
Yeah, I'll let, please do.
Okay. So the permit application is, there are two separate permit applications, there's one with the Army Corps of Engineers, and then the other one with OCRM.
Right.
We have been going back and forth, we've submitted letters to them requesting for a variance, that happened early this summer, they returned back and said that, no, we have to go through the full permitting process. That full permitting process is what City Council engaged ATM to work on, updated the on and in manual. We have since then went back to OCRM and the Army Corps and recently stated that there is an expedited process to move the permit into our name, and then the part of the operation will still have to go through the full permitting process. That'll take about three months.
But what are they, I mean, what are we doing in terms of a lease for Title Wave, and are we like, it feels such a, like so gray, and would it be...
We voted to let that currently expire per the lease term.
Okay, so they do, okay. I just, liability-wise, if we have this, this organization with no lease, but they still have...
They have a lease till next September.
Okay.
They have a lease until next September, correct?
September of 2020.
Correct.
Okay.
The permit is separated, that's what we're working through.
Okay, I'm just trying to figure out where we are with...
We're fine in terms of liabilities and leases and all that.
Okay.
Councilmember Hill Smith.
Are we going to have a workshop on the Marina as a whole sometime soon?
We talked about that back in the spring, didn't we? April.
We were kind of shooting for...
We did, we're trying, we were thinking about September to have that meeting. There is going to be a meeting on Thursday about the restaurant. We were hopeful that we would get the response back from OCRM sooner, because it felt like putting the horse before the car.
The car before the horse.
And that hasn't happened yet. Certainly, I think, you know, the city, the city council can have a special meeting and will facilitate that now that the summer's over and those conversations can be had, so, you know, I'm, I am not, I mean, I am all about having the meeting, we just have had several events.
Maybe November.
Well, Desiree, if I may, a couple of points I think are worth noting before Thursday. Two of the bids are restaurant-only, one of the bids is comprehensive in terms of Marina, so it's going to facilitate a much broader discussion than just the Morgan Creek Grill. Secondly, this OCRM process, by definition, requires a 30-day public commentary period. It's really hard to try to stage these conversations appropriately when we have moving pieces and parts, and we have a lot of them right now. I think the first step that is the correct step is the meeting on Thursday, right? I think council will get a view of, you know, how comprehensive we want to be, do we want to entertain those bids, and candidly, we're not bound by anything of those bids. We could do the whole process over again if we chose to, but we're trying to do them in some logical order.
Councilmember Ward.
No, Councilmember Smith said what I wanted to say.
And I, yes, sir, Councilmember Kinghorn.
We all know there's a lot of moving parts. I think the permit, quite frankly, is a small portion of the larger whole. We need to come together, hopefully, we could form some consensus as to what the vision is of the future, because as you make these decisions, the restaurants, Title Wave, other activities, infrastructure, council should have a consensus. And quite frankly, whether it happens between now and the end of the year with this council or the next council, at some point in time, there's got to be the leadership that forms a consensus, and whether that's...
Vision.
9-0 or 5-4, we got to move on and do what we need to do there.
I don't mind my little comment here. Those were a great comment, you know, we do need to go through the proposals on Thursday, and I do think that we need to have a public forum, because this is going to be our legacy going forward. You know, this is going to be, outlive most of us, so we got to...
Seven, three years.
What we've got to do is do it right. So again, I totally agree with that, we will have a public forum when I... Any other questions?
I would, yeah, let me just comment, if you're referencing my comments, it's not as much initially about a public forum, but that there's consensus and a discussion amongst council. Rem... but that there's consensus and a discussion amongst council. Remind everybody that we had two years of public interaction on the Marina previously and of course, we have that in the record books. I would think at least as a starting point. You've got to start somewhere.
Yeah, we totally agree with that, but if you recall, that failed pretty strongly. So I think we need to reopen that for what our vision is going forward.
We have a strategic plan. It's the only thorough plan that we have. That's all we have to go with. We have these other pieces of the puzzle and it's got to be addressed at some point or we're failing our citizens.
I was told I need to take control and two people, two times speaking, let's call it quits after two times. Anybody else hearing none? So ends your report?
That's it.
Thank you very much. Okay. Reports from city officers, boards and commissions, accommodations, tax advisory committee, minutes are attached. Board of zoning appeals, no meeting in September. Planning commission, minutes are attached. Reports from special joint committees, none. Petitions received, referred or disposed of, none. Bills already in possession of council. Second reading ordinance 2019-17, an ordinance to provide amendments and provide clarity to rules of procedure during public meetings. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Similar.
Second? No discussion. This is going to be about limits of time for speaking. Total time allotted is already part of our ordinance, it's 30 minutes. It's already part of our ordinance where you sign up and tell what you're going to talk about. But we've, and I would say I allowed it to go much longer, but it was before my time on May or two where people have talked for hour, two hours at a time. And our time here is valuable and we need to get these meetings in and over and going on to the next one. So we're going to keep it to 30 minutes, but discussion.
You're looking straight at me.
No, I'm looking down.
Okay, good.
She's bunny on you.
I know that, and I haven't read all of these red marks again, but there was some discussion about making sure that the topic, when they sign in, that they give us some idea of what the topic is and that the topic be part of the agenda. In other words, if we have agenda items, that the comments are to be towards those agenda items. And I'm not sure.
That's already in there. As it's written, but it's certainly an amendment that can be considered if.
Because we had that discussion. I think in Real Property, we discussed that it would be good if we had an idea and as we prepare for our agenda, if, you know, citizens have comments towards that, then that helps us in our discussions. But if it's just, you know, out there, it, I'm not sure. We just thought it would be more disciplined if we held it to agenda items.
Very good point. Yes, ma'am, sir.
My concern with that would only be that what if I'm a citizen and I have something that never appears on the agenda?
Yeah.
Question, Jim. Yes, ma'am.
I agree with Councilmember Moy. I think there needs to be an avenue for people to bring their concerns to us face to face. And if it's not on the agenda, I don't think we, they need to wait for that or, as he said, it may never be on the agenda.
Councilmember Ward.
I think it needs to be open to anything. Maybe we did something last month they didn't like.
Yes, ma'am.
Not on the agenda, you know. They need to be able to express.
Yes, ma'am.
Two things, just on that topic, like tonight, Mr. McMaster was talking about beach chairs and tagging, and that certainly was not on the agenda. And it was fine. So I mean, that was a perfect example. The other thing we did talk about was possibility of having a stop, a clock, and we thought that would be a distraction and we didn't really like the idea of having a red light.
Yellow light.
Yeah. Sort of felt like elementary school cafeteria.
We'd be pinning them.
And I just sort of feel like Robert's Rules really addresses a lot of this and that this isn't totally truly necessary, that we can control the meetings from up here. And this feels like an overreach and just. Well, again, I'm back to me, the aggressive thing. I guess I have some sort of weird.
If you look at our ordinances right now, it is limited to 30 minutes. We're talking about, it's limited to 30 minutes and the total number of speakers divided into that 30 minutes is how it's written right now. We're talking about a three-minute time limit which kind of mimics Sullivan's Island, Mount Pleasant, Folly Beach. Councilmember Buchanan, yes, sir.
And it's not only the, I think the biggest part of our ordinance now is in order to speak, you have to sign up 30 minutes prior to the meeting in our ordinance.
Sign up as you walk in.
Yeah. So right now, I mean, the way we have it right now, the way the ordinance reads, if somebody walks in and they don't sign up 30 minutes prior to the meeting, they're not allowed to speak. So we need to make changes to that. And even if we go through and pass this according to Robert's Rules of Order, we can at any time amend and make amendments to the point of order and extend it if we need to based on the topic or conversation of what's going on. So while it's a guideline, it's not set in stone because we still have the option to make those changes if necessary. It just gives us a little bit of better hand grasp on the situation.
Very well said. Yes, ma'am.
I would like to see, make sure that when we are for the minutes, including the correct spellings of people's names, and I think that the sign-in can help with that. And also would like, I don't know what the system is for following up with people who bring concerns to us because we so often cannot directly address them in the moment. I feel like sometimes historically, people have fallen through the cracks and not heard anything and felt like they're, they brought it to us and then it disappears.
And that's going to help with that. Because it's a chronic pattern. This is perfect. So that would help with that. I do have just one comment.
Yes, ma'am, please.
I've heard some concerns or comments from some council members about the red line not including anything specific to special presentations, just like what we had today. And there could be an amendment that city council may consider to add some language that special presentations will be allowed under Citizens Commons with the approval of the mayor and that their time will not count towards the 30-minute for citizen participation.
Did I hear a motion on that for amendment?
She means during the course of the meeting.
During course of the meeting.
I believe.
I'm sorry?
During the course of the meeting, like we did this evening.
No, that was preordained.
So they're listed on, we typically list any special presentations under Citizens Commons and there's nothing in the ordinance that really addresses that. So it's a recommendation to give a little bit more clarity on those special presentations and they have to be requested in advance, approved by the mayor, and that that time will not count towards a 30-minute period on Citizens Commons.
I'd like to make amendment to this motion, does it include that?
Does it need to be in there?
Clarity.
It may not, but I think some residents have some concerns about Citizens Commons, special presentations having additional times or taking the 30-minute time period. So it's just, it's a little clarity, but.
Kind of like the amendment when they came and did your presentation.
Can we not, as practice, just list them in a separate area of the agenda, not under Citizens Commons?
Well, the order of the agenda and the items on the agenda are listed by code. Usually, the reason why they're under Citizens Commons is they really don't fall under. They may fall under miscellaneous business, but I think that the group has advocated to having those presentations up earlier because y'all see, we, you know, we get, people start leaving after 30 minutes. So that way they can take advantage of listening to any special presentation.
I think we need to change the ordinance if that's the case, to make special presentations after Citizens Commons or before, I don't really care.
That's another option, certainly.
But that would.
Would you make that as an amendment?
To the code.
We've got a motion right now.
All right, a motion, second.
Well, we got a motion right now.
I did amendment. I did make a motion for an amendment.
Nobody seconded it.
Nobody seconded it.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, yes, sir.
And I agree. I mean, instead of making all these special exceptions to it and move it and saying, well, normally, this is not where, this is not where this is supposed to take place, but we'll go ahead and make it happen even though it's not the code, I think what we need to do is correct the code.
Correct.
And I think what, right now, we need to go through, and to change our code, take a couple more steps than that. And I mean, just voting on this tonight's not going to do that. So we need to go ahead and withdraw motions and defer. And so if that's the case, then move, you know, change the code to have Citizens Comments and underneath that have special presentations, I think, at that time. So doing, if that's the consensus of council, then motions have to be withdrawn from here in order for you to go.
I made a motion. I made a motion.
I would, I would thank.
I'm a little confused.
I made the amendment.
I think that could be two separate issues. One is what we have in front of you for second reading, which is some guidelines for Citizens Commons.
Right.
We can certainly move forward with looking at the order of the agenda, the items listed on the agenda, and add on Citizens Comments a fourth item with any special presentations.
Perfect. I withdraw my amendment I had made, so.
Okay.
All right, everything, all those? Anybody else?
Wait a minute.
Come on, welcome.
The whole portion being between you guys went by so fast. Exactly what was your motion?
Okay, the motion is request for, let me find it back on our, an ordinance to provide amendments and to provide clarity to the rules of procedure during public meetings. And this was about limits to Citizens Comments, three minutes, a timer to track time, total time allotted, that 30 minutes is already part of our ordinance. Group of speakers, if they're going to speak about the same thing, please stand up and say, I can.
That's the original motion, sorry. But you and Mr. Ward had a motion that came up really fast and went really, went by real quick.
There's all, please ran.
Okay, so.
Didn't happen.
Didn't happen.
Disappeared.
That's all right.
And we understand how confusing that can be.
So no amendments?
No amendments, yes, sir.
You made a motion to approve the original.
That's correct. As written. Okay. Call for the motion.
Hopefully, we're going to defeat it.
Do I see a hand down there?
Councilmember Buchanan mentioned this eliminating the 30-minute ahead of time.
We'll come back to that another time.
That's, we're not going to, is this the time, though, to address that?
That is eliminated.
So that is on this ordinance. This ordinance.
Is to get rid of that?
The requirement to register 30 minutes before, but people would have to register and sign in ahead of the meeting.
I'm good.
All of those in favor of the second reading of this ordinance signify by saying aye. Aye. Any nays?
No.
I'm sorry.
That's two.
Aye.
Councilman Kinghorn and Rice. Okay, moving on. Let's find out where we are now. Let's see. Introduction to new bills, resolution proclamations, none miscellaneous business. Request for city-sponsored event status for Johnson &amp; Johnson event in Wild Dunes to allow a small fireworks display on November 2nd, 2019. And I think we have somebody here who can fill us in.
They had to sit through all of this?
Well, you guys have seen me up here before. This is my 16th year doing J&amp;J. And on November 2nd, we would like to do a small fireworks display at the end of our event. And since Wild Dunes has a lot of construction going on, we're actually doing this event at the Citadel Beach Club. So I have spoken with the fire chief, Graham, and we actually spoke with the fireworks provider today. We actually have a meeting out there Monday, hopefully to do a walkthrough and all. We have certificates of insurance that will be offered. We have the gentleman's license on file, his fireworks license, and I'm just here to see if we could get, make this happen.
Quick, little bit of history. This is the third or fourth time in the last five years we've come to counsel Wild Dunes as for various projects. You know, we work really hard to be good neighbors on these special projects. J&amp;J is a example of partnership and a business that really contributes a lot to Isle of Palm's economy. So we estimate in addition to what they spend at the, with what they spend at the resort and all the ancillary spend, about $600,000 in revenue each year is pumped into the Isle of Palm's community. Additionally, they've been with us for 11 years, so kind of doing some quick math, talking about $6 million in taxable revenue that they brought in. Beyond that, they're a great company to bring great people in. And over the years, we, at the beginning, may have had a few public safety people doing things that they shouldn't have, and it's really refined. We've got a great group of people who come in. This is a similar request we made two years ago.
Two years ago.
And this was approved. We went with the fire chief. Unfortunately, we had insane rain that happened that night, so we had to cancel it or cancel it. So we hope we have the opportunity to do the small fireworks display this year.
Any questions?
I think it would define small. We talked about a five-minute, five-hour show. We've already indicated to them that it would be required to provide certificates of insurance and also hire off-duty fire department and police department personnel for, to ensure safety, crowd control, and shooters.
Of course, yes.
Yes. And also Chief Graham has evaluated the request, doesn't find, doesn't have any concerns with it from the public safety standpoint. Typically, these requests go before city council through the committee process. And the reason why this was not included in the public safety agenda, it was my mistake. We changed the agenda so much and the three days coming up to the meeting, it didn't make it to the final agenda that was posted. And because it requires action from city council, it cannot be added to the agenda with a two-thirds vote. That is why it's, you know, presented to you all. The city has approved it before. They are great partners. They have a great event and they contribute a lot to the, to the community.
Move to approve.
Wait a minute, Councilman Ward has a question.
Do we want a motion first?
I think we, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. Councilmember Ward.
How many times have they come before one in a fireworks display?
I think the last one I recall was in 2014.
Have we, do we give these out to anybody else except for Johnson &amp; Johnson except for Ireland, Fourth of July?
We, the city council has. There has been private weddings that have come before the city. I think the last one that I remember from our records was in 2009.
I don't remember that. Where is that? That was for my time there.
I'm curious to know if you have a plan for cleaning up afterward, if there's any
debris from the fireworks.
Absolutely, yeah. The fireworks company does take care of all of that.
They do.
Yes. And we will walk the space together. And if there's anything else that needs to be taken care of, we will address that. Absolutely.
Councilmember. The Wild Dunes operations team, we've got big floodlights that go out anytime we do an event on the beach. You know, we do quite a few small events directly in front of the Grand Pavilion. And it's really important to us that, you know, sort of the Boy Scout rule that we leave it better than we found it.
Councilmember Ferentz.
Thank you.
In the past, this fireworks display was within Wild Dunes in front of the boardwalk, right?
In fact, we've never actually had it because of the rain. It was going to be in front of the Citadel Beach House at that time as well.
What about the residents that live next to the Citadel Beach House in that residential area? Because this is moving it into the residential section rather than.
That's where it was going to be last time as well.
In front of Beach House? And they get.
Councilmember.
I appreciate your company and all that.
I just think we have a hotel being built. It is a very dangerous precedent and I don't understand, for me, how it's a, in essence, city-sponsored venue. And are we not legally opening up Pandora's Box to a lot more of this requested activity? You know, one five-minute fireworks display is one thing. I'll tell you, my dog hates them, just for what it's worth. It, you know, it feels like, it feels like overreach in terms of how we use, you know, city-sponsored events for me.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I was curious of a few details in terms of timing, like what time are they planning to do this and then parking, other things. Impact to the residents was actually my question as well. Like, have you spoken to the residents that live around?
We will. I'm not going to speak to them until I have approval. And then when we, once we have approval, I also speak to them about the music because I always let them know that there will be live music and it will end at 10:00. I always let them know that there will be live music and it will end at 10 o'clock. But the fireworks display right now is tentatively 9:15.
Any other questions? I don't mind adding a couple of things. I think y'all have been for us, had a circus done at the county park that exceeded our height and we hadn't given them amendments in. I think y'all have asked for a helicopter for James Gawn Titan team.
Yep.
And I think we built a, y'all built a pirate ship.
Yep. And we built a UFO.
A UFO. And then I think you also asked for a big bonfire on the beach one year. We came down to cans on the beach.
Yeah. It wasn't J&amp;J, but yes.
We've done different things for y'all and y'all have been a very good.
And we appreciate it.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of the city-sponsored event status for Johnson &amp; Johnson in the Wild Dunes to be held at the Citadel Beach Club?